Good afternoon and welcome to the, um, another meeting of the Police and Crime Panel. Um, my name is Edward Lee and I am chairing the panel this afternoon. Um, I'd like to welcome those members of the public, I don't think we have any actually, uh, or press, uh, who are watching the live stream, um, at this meeting via the Peterborough City Council's YouTube page. Um, and for those watching on the live stream, uh, could the members of the panel please introduce themselves before we start the meeting? Um, just before that, I'll just, uh, start with the, um, members, uh, the Commissioner and, uh, staff that he's brought with him. So we have the Commissioner, um, at the end there, Deputy Commissioner John Peach, uh, Nick Dean, the Chief Constable of the Cambridgeshire Constabulary, uh, Jim Haylett, the Chief Executive, um, for the OPCC, uh, John Lee, the Director of Finance and Resources at the Constabulary, and Matthew Warren, the Chief Finance Officer. Um, so if we could just go around, um, the panel members just to introduce themselves. Uh, councillor Ferguson.
Councillor Stephen Ferguson, uh, County Councillor of the Sineyts East and Quansden.
And I'm councillor Anna Bradnam, uh, the County Councillor for Waterbeech Division.
I'm councillor Claire Daunton, I'm a South Cambs, uh, District Councillor for the Fended and Fullbourne Ward in South Cambs.
I'm Alan Sharp, I'm representing East Cambs District Council.
Claude George, I'm an independent member.
Uh, Scott Warren, representing the Peterborough City Council.
Good afternoon, councillor Simon Bywater, I'm a Sawtree member and representing Hunter District Council.
Uh, hi, I'm Alex Collis, City Councillor for King's Hedges and representing Cambridge City Council.
Thank you, and I'm the other co-opted member as well as being Chair. Um, do we have apologies for absence, please?
Thank you, Chair, yes, we have apologies for absence from councillor Ansar Ali, councillor Steve Tierney, uh, councillor Andrew Lynn and councillor Christian Hogg. Thank you.
Thank you, and does any member wish to declare an interest? No? Okay, thank you. Uh, so moving on to item three, the minutes of the meeting held on the fifteenth of November twenty twenty one. Um, do any members have any questions or amendments they wish to suggest? Councillor Bradnam.
Thank you, Chair, um, I was just thinking whether I ought to declare an interest in the fact that the proposed new police hub, uh, near Milton Park and Ride is in my division, and I was just wondering whether I ought to declare that as an interest, but, um, probably not.
I think you just have, so that's fine.
Thank you, uh, so returning to the minutes, uh, are there any corrections or additions a member would like to note or the Commissioner's office? So are you happy for me to sign the minutes as an accurate record of the meeting? Okay, thank you. So moving on to item four, um, the Commissioner's responses to the panel's recommendations at the last meeting. Uh, do any members have any questions on the response we received? Councillor Bradnam.
Thank you, Chair, um, yes, I wanted, thank you very much, um, and welcome to, um...
Councillor Bradnam, could you just bring the microphone a little closer?
Sorry, it's difficult to know which way around to have it. Um, I wanted to, um, ask the Police and Crime Commissioner, um, about the issue, we'd asked you to investigate the possibility of more central funding for domestic homicide reviews, and, um, in your response to item three, uh, you explained what you were doing about that, and I wondered if you had any update on that, because we were really concerned that you would be trying to seek central government funding for this, um, uh, responsibility which is required by the Home Office and over which we have no control over how many we need to do, so I wondered if you'd made any, you know, got any useful feedback on that?
Councillor, I, I haven't directly approached the Home Office, uh, but we are in consultation with the Association of Police and Crime Commissioners. I mean, I, I feel going as a single PCC, I suspect we, we won't get much joy, we'll be better in numbers. Uh, those conversations are ongoing with the Portfolio Group within the APCC, and I will report back, uh, when I get that information. Uh, I mean, the reality is here, councillor, I, I will ask the question of, of government, uh, I think their response will be that they're already, uh, significant funds in relation to, to, uh, domestic abuse and, and other crime types, but that doesn't mean to say that, uh, I will try my hardest on behalf of the residents of our county.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so do I get the impression that the other Police and Crime Commissioners are of the same mind as we are, that, that, that central government funding would be, would be appropriate?
I, I certainly can't commit on behalf of other Police and Crime Commissioners, I have spoken to a number, uh, I think there are various views out there, so that, that's why I'm working with the Association of Police and Crime Commissioners on this matter.
Thank you.
So we agreed at the last meeting that we would hold off writing a letter ourselves to the Minister pending your, the response that you received, I take it that that would still be your advice?
Chair, thank you, that, that would be my advice at the moment, I, I completely understand the issue and particularly for our district councils, you know, it's not an insignificant amount of money, and I will make the case.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions on the response? Uh, is the panel happy to note the response? Thank you. Uh, so moving on to item five, uh, public questions and statements, have we received any?
Thank you, Chair, we've received no public questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, moving on to item six, review of complaints, have we received any complaints?
We've received no complaints either, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so moving on to item seven, the, um, the main, uh, item on our agenda, which is, uh, to consider the precept proposal of the Commissioner, uh, for the next financial year. Um, Commissioner, would you like to introduce this item?
Thank you, Chair, uh, thank you, panel. But before I go to my brief, I just want to, to share with you. Um, I'm often asked in my role, uh, am I enjoying the job? Uh, and in fact, on my way in here today, I was asked, are you enjoying the job? Uh, that wasn't prompted. My, my answer is always, this is a great job, it is a brilliant job, and the reason I say so is that I'm supporting and holding the Chief Constable and partners to account for the prevention and detection of crime, supporting victims and witnesses, and keeping our communities safe. That's something I always wanted to do, and that is something I have always done. What is not great about my job is coming here today and proposing to you to raise council tax for the great residents of Cambridgeshire and Peterborough. But I believe on the evidence that I've been given by the Chief Constable and others that is absolutely necessary, and the reason it's absolutely necessary is to deliver on what the residents of Cambridgeshire and Peterborough have asked for: war police, cutting crime, keeping all of our communities safe. Now, my first duty as a Commissioner is to secure the maintenance of the police force in our area, and it is the Chief's responsibility to run the organisation and inform me of operational requirements. In order to ensure the Chief has the resources he needs to effectively police our county, I have been and continue to be in regular discussions with the Chief Constable, both about finance, but also about the development of my Police and Crime Plan, and importantly, operational delivery. Now, it's in that context it is for me to set the overall budget, and for the Chief to manage and deliver against that. I look at the details, but my job is to look at the bigger and long-term picture. So back in twenty eighteen nineteen, the government paid seventy-eight point four million towards the cost of the Constabulary. The remainder, of course, coming from the precept. Now, this year, the government is paying ninety-five point one million, great news. So the government is paying more, but the obvious question you will ask, why do I need to raise the precept? Well, this is an important question, because for me, I recognise the hardship many people are facing with increases in living costs, it's real, we know that. But since twenty eighteen nineteen, there's been a huge increase in police officer numbers, significant increase, an extra two hundred and eighty-nine police officers by March twenty twenty-three in Cambridgeshire and Peterborough. We now have far more than we have ever had before. But that cost to the organisation is not just to cover, officers pay, it ripples with increases in costs throughout the whole organisation, obviously, fleet, vehicles, estates, HR, vetting, really important, IT, and a host of other support functions. Now, one way or the other, if you increase the front line by that much, you need to increase the overall capacity of the organisation by the same amount, and of course, that pushes up the overall costs. So put simply, a twenty percent increase in officer numbers, which is great, with an extra twenty-one percent from the government, leaves the precept to support all the other additionality needed. Also importantly, the budget was being balanced back then by using reserves, nearly two million pounds of reserves, and of course, that is not sustainable, that is not good financial management, that will not happen on my watch. So I'm, I'm also looking at the long-term financial perspective, and if I thought for one second that next year or the year after, that we were likely to get substantial increases in government funding, meaning we'd only struggled for this year, so I could have used that reserves, then I would have done, I would have used reserves to plug that gap, and not raise this precept by this level. However, the reality is that with a three-year indication of funding from government, and that's good news, we have a three-year settlement, though we don't have all the detail, that it is unlikely to be the case, and times will get harder, not easier. I also look to see whether the Constabulary is well-run, so that I am not asking for additional money from the public, when what we already have is not being used effectively, and that is a significant part of my role. I'm happy to say that wherever I look, I see efforts to maximise any other keep income regenerate, I see good financial planning, and I see good business planning. And that's not just me saying that, that's from internal and external auditors, and of course, the HMICFRS. So, going back to my beginning statement, it is with a heavy heart, this is not something I want to do, but I present the proposal to you today, and I know many of you will be considering the impact of it on the people within your communities. I will however say that communities do tell me they want to see more police officers, that's real, that's the first thing I am always told by communities, by the councillors, by business owners, more police officers, more visibility, cutting crime. Furthermore, the survey that we did on the precept increase was supported in all six areas of our county, so I believe that we have public support moving forward. However, Chair, if I may, I would now like to hand over to the Chief Constable to give an organisational context on the proposal put forward to the panel today. Thank you.
Please, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Police and Crime Commissioner and Chair, and just to, um, just to confirm, um, I'm never asked whether I enjoy the job, uh, but I can confirm I do enjoy the job. Um, the, the first thing in terms of the operational context and just in terms of the Constabulary is, uh, is really to start this presentation with a thank you, and that's a thank you to the commitment of the Police and Crime Commissioner and also the panel for supporting the precept rise last year, because that has enabled the, uh, the Constabulary, as I outlined at the panel meeting this time last year, to invest in significant areas of business, which is crucial to taking the Constabulary forward. And some of those areas, just as a reminder, were continual professional development units to add to the support and infrastructure around new recruits officers, uh, as the Commissioner has outlined, the significant increase in numbers of officers under the National Uplift Programme that we have been so fortunate to receive. The vulnerability focus desk to support the change in profile of crime, which we have seen not only here in Cambridgeshire, but also nationally over the last few years. And just to give you a flavour of that investment, then in the first month of that setting up of those two units across the organisation, they were actively involved in a hundred and twenty-two cases of domestic abuse, uh, they reviewed twenty-two reviews of domestic abuse victims' cases, and they obtained twenty-two successful protection orders, which actually in that first month was, uh, greater than the entirety of the previous year. And that success around supporting the frontline on vulnerability has continued throughout the year. We invested and have invested in cyber, uh, prevention officers, and also diversity and inclusion officer to support the recruitment of officers, as and I'm sure you would accept, the importance is not just about numbers coming into the organisation, it's about the diversity and difference which I bring in to my organisation. And equally, finally, just in terms of the demand abound, the calls coming into the organisation, we have seen an increase in demand. We've seen an increase in demand over the pandemic, and we have certainly seen a shift and an increase in demand since the restrictions have lifted in the last few months. So I would like to put on record the fact that, um, that investment which we were supported with last year has been, uh, put forward, invested in, and has made a considerable difference to the communities of this county. So where are we today in terms of the operational context of the organisation? Well, first of all, we're in a very different environment, uh, from scrutiny, from scrutiny from government, scrutiny from Police and Crime Commissioners under the review, and equally, if not more important, scrutiny from members of the public about what we do day in, day out across the organisation. And that's not only in terms of policing, but across the whole criminal justice system. The government set out its beating crime plan earlier this year, and I don't think anyone could argue with the overarching aims of that beating in crime plan, which was to reduce crime, to reduce and, and ensure less victims of crime are within the country and indeed in the county, and overall to produce a safety, a safer community. And that's what we've tried to achieve, uh, through, uh, the leadership of my chief officer team and from the officers and staff, uh, right across the organisation. But with that scrutiny comes the ask, uh, and that ask comes under national performance measures which are now coming to the fore. And they centre around reducing, uh, murder and homicide, reducing serious violence, disrupting drug supply and county lines, reducing neighbourhood crime, and also improving satisfaction amongst victims, with a particular focus on domestic abuse. And I've outlined the progress that Constabulary have made in that area, under the vulnerability focus desks as one example. And finally, around tackling cybercrime. So where are we against, uh, the baseline of figures of reducing crime, in neighbourhood crime across this county, since the baseline was outlined by the government, uh, back to two thousand and nineteen? Well, if we compare the results between two thousand and nineteen and August twenty twenty-one, then significant reductions in crime have occurred. Twenty-five percent reduction in, in robberies, tw- forty-seven percent in theft from the, from the person, twenty-five percent in theft of motor vehicles, and forty-six percent in theft from motor vehicles. And burglary dwelling, burglary of people's homes of that intrusive nature and that, uh, real crossing the, the boundary into one's private life has reduced across this county by forty-eight percent, and on business burglaries by twenty-nine percent. So if you look at the figures, then back in two thousand and eighteen, and I came in post in September two thousand and eighteen, then on a monthly basis, we were averaging two hundred and seventy-eight, uh, burglary dwellings per month. December two thousand and twenty-one, that had reduced to eighty-five, less than about three or four burglaries across the county, bear in mind a population of a million people here, uh, across the organisation. But what we have seen is an increase in confidence of the police and our partner agencies to deal with hidden crime, and that includes domestic abuse, and we have seen a rise in domestic abuse, we've seen a rise in, uh, child sexual abuse and exploitation, and we've seen a rise in serious sexual offences. And yes, one could, uh, put that down to, uh, the police activities, but actually, a huge amount of that is through the, the confidence of people to come forward to report such incidents to us. So are we doing things, uh, in terms of what matters to the public? In two thousand and eighteen, fifty-four percent of the people surveyed in this county said that the police were doing what mattered to them within their communities. The recent survey outlines that that's nearly up to sixty-seven percent, and so vast improvements have been made, and I accept that improvements need to continue. And overall, the satisfaction of the organisation has improved from seventy-three percent up to eighty-two percent about the way we deal with things. But that national scrutiny, that scrutiny from our communities, it is ever-present with what we do, and quite rightly, and we accept that and welcome that scrutiny about the organisation's performance. But hopefully, that would give you a flavour of the successes of this organisation over the past twelve to eighteen months, and indeed, as the Commissioner has said, that's not just me saying that, that is around inspection activity from a Majesty's Inspectorate of Constabulary and Fire and Rescue, and also from internal and external audit, and indeed, from what my organisation and communities tell me. The Commissioner mentioned the rise in number of officers, and back in two thousand, uh, back in two thousand and twelve, the Constabulary had just over thirteen hundred officers, uh, within its organisation, and we saw austerity kick in over those previous, over those years, and many forces suffered the reduction in officers. Here in Cambridgeshire, we maintained that gap above the national average in maintaining officer numbers, uh, and by March twenty twenty-three, by achieving the national uplift numbers, we will have the highest number of officers within this county at just over seventeen hundred officers. But one of the challenges, one of the challenges around that uplift programme is it being, brings in inflexibility in terms of budget and in, but in terms of budget management. We, within the Constabulary, and credit to the organisation, uh, and particularly to the, uh, the back office staff, for want of a better word, around human resources, have achieved excellent progress in achieving the government's uplift target. And if you, as a reminder, it was a three-year, it is a three-year programme of bringing in officers within every, uh, police force across, uh, England and Wales, uh, and according to the actual funding formula is the allocation. So in the first year, we were allocated an additional sixty-two officers, the second year, eighty-two additional officers, and this year going forward to March twenty-three, an additional eighty-two officers. And we have not only achieved that, we've also exceeded that amount of officers within the organisation, and we are on track, uh, to secure those officers through to March twenty-three to meet our uplift programme. I equally mentioned, uh, the investment with inclusion and diversity, and bringing into the organisation, again, a reminder to the panel that in two thousand and eighteen, the BAME population of, and profile of the organisation sat at just over three percent, we are now at just over five percent. But equally, bear in mind, the actual, uh, ratios obviously alter with the amount of officers and staff I have within that organisation, and we're doing some tremendous work in trying to, uh, bolster the recruitment of officers across the organisation. And where I will, uh, focus in terms of going forward of this precept rise, of where the investment will be, is to se- is to secure the support for those additional officers and staff within the organisation. I've mentioned the diversity, uh, and equally with the numbers comes the, uh, difference in officer training that we will go forward with this year. We've already had our first cohort under the new police educational qualification system, which is the, uh, degree entrance or degree qualification which officers will achieve after a three-year programme. And again, just as a flavour of the attraction of diversity that that programme, um, uh, brings us, is that under the degree entry, then, uh, our profile of applicants of BAME has increased to twelve percent under the PCDA, which is the non-degree holder entrant route, and to just under fourteen percent for degree entrance into the organisation. I have three hundred people, near enough, waiting to join the organisation coming forward in the pipeline, I have no difficulty in attracting people to this organisation. What I do have, uh, a trickiness, for want of a better word, is actually, um, getting them through the system, maintaining their interest over the five to six months of the application process, and then entering the organisation. Once they're in the organisation, my attrition is very low, I lose, uh, very few people. And again, on that, uh, new system of entry into the organisation, then we work in a collaboration with Bedfordshire and Hertfordshire, and over the first few cohorts, we've brought in, uh, ninety-seven officers, and only one has left through personal reasons. So you can see, we are an attractive organisation to enter and also to remain with. But as I said, that officer uplift programme brings in additional costs, as the Commissioner has outlined, and I won't repeat that in terms of, uh, uniform, ICT, et cetera, and the infrastructure that is required, uh, to build that. But equally, it builds in budgetary restrictions, as John will outline in a few minutes, is that eighty, eighty percent, uh, of the costs of the organisation will no doubt, as you imagine, will come down to, uh, staff costs, uh, of which are, is totally inflexible. And, and of course, I have to achieve those government uplift targets, and therefore historically where we flexed around officer recruitment, we're not in that ballgame at the minute, we have to maintain, we have to achieve and we have to maintain officer numbers to March twenty-three, and also maintain them post twenty-three. And therefore, a small amount of the budget is there to make the efficiencies required. Efficiencies have been achieved, and John will outline those, uh, efficiencies in terms of where we've achieved it, not only locally within Cambridgeshire... but across the collaboration and regionally in terms of our relationship. And the operational context, notoriously, we've come here before and outlined the funding formula, which we consider unfair, as do many police forces. And we have been promised by the government that that will be reformed by the end of this parliament. But again, just as a reminder, we are the fifth lowest funding force on the Funding Formula Grant. And based on all government funding, we are the sixth lowest force within England and Wales. And notoriously, as you would imagine, that does present its challenges. But with those challenges comes opportunities, and we have developed over the last two years a substantial and really evidence-based business and planning cycle. Not only to bring in the financial element, but also to map that against operational activity. And you may hear, especially if you listen to my deputy chief constable, around the planning cycle called the STRA process, which is the Strategic Risk Assessment Process that we have successfully built under Jane's leadership. And that really outlines an outline of demand around cost and around resource to actually build the challenges going forward, but also how we're going to move forward in terms of a sustainable operating model and a sustainable service delivery to meet the communities here. But what that does highlight through that evidence-based planning cycle are the challenges and the pressures that we face of where we must invest going forward. And that ranges around neighbourhood policing, missing persons, children, young people, organised crime, county lines, etcetera. But as I have outlined at the beginning of this presentation, we have made considerable successes there. So actually, the planning going forward around the medium-term financial strategy is to invest, in essence, in three main areas, which I will outline. But I will also stress, as I stressed last year, the investment of Precept goes to building a sustainable Constabulary, both financially and operationally. The medium-term financial strategy covers that period from 2022 through to 2025. And as the Commissioner has outlined, the use of reserves, as has previously been outlined at this panel, is not a sustainable way forward. And John, under his leadership, has built a sustainable operating plan, financial plan, to outline the medium-term financial strategy going forward and to balance the books over the next couple of years, which in terms of policing context, that's probably a rare eventuality. So not only does the STRA process support the corporate plan, which is my vision of my organisation going forward around operational priorities, organisational priorities, but equally as important is the values and the integrity of the organisation going forward. And again, the Commissioner mentioned the importance of vetting and ensuring we have the right people coming into the organisation with the right values. And equally, once they're in the organisation, we maintain that integrity and professionalism as they go about their policing service. And that applies equally to police officers as it does to police staff. But there is greater scrutiny and greater focus on that financial sustainability going forward. And that's through to four main reasons. One is the increased budget inflexibility, as I've outlined, through the uplift programme. Future investment requirements, which we are tied in through national policing programmes. The increased capital requirements that are required to deliver policing across the county. And equally, the government's expectation for the delivery of efficiencies. So as I said, three main areas really going forward for building the medium-term financial plan going forward, and also the investment of the organisation, which I intend to take the investment, if secured today, forward for the next twelve to eighteen months. First of all, that concentrates on the National Uplift Programme, that recruitment nationally of twenty thousand additional officers. And as I've said, we've been very successful here in Cambridgeshire in bringing in the numbers, maintaining those numbers and not losing officers once they enter the organisation. So that support around infrastructure, that support around young officers in service, the average length of service of response officers across this organisation and policing the county is three years. The average length of service for all police constables across the county is around about five to six years. I have an incredibly young and inexperienced workforce. Now, that brings with it opportunity, as I said. Very young, enthusiastic, doing a fantastic job. Otherwise, they wouldn't have achieved those crime reduction targets. But actually, it brings challenges in terms of their ongoing support. And that's why last year, the investment of continuous professional development units and the development of those through health and wellbeing, through HR professionals, through resilience, is vitally important to maintain the workforce going forward. The second element of the building the medium-term financial plan, building on the back of uplift, is new additional investment. We face challenges around the change in profile and the globality and the technology around crime going forward. And the digital investigative support officers which we intend to invest with is very important. Over ninety percent of all investigations now have some sort of technology footprint of which we need to get our heads around tackle in order to take the organisation forward. Additional cybercrime investigations, as cybercrime becomes more prominent within policing. And probably, cybercrime in terms of risk to the organisation around infrastructure, a cyber attack probably is our biggest risk as an organisation. We invest in prevention around young persons intervention officers and the successful programme of safer schools across the county. And also the investment around our multi-agency safeguarding hub, our exploitation hubs, and the teams of interventions around prevention and through our prevention strategy is equally important to take forward. And one can't have missed the national profile around violence against women and girls off the back of the tragic circumstances of the Sarah Everard cases. Not only highlighting the vetting issues I've described, but also our interaction and confidence amongst vulnerable people within society. And finally, digital innovation. As we move forward, digital innovation is at the forefront of policing and must be to continue those efficiencies going forward. So two aims, one is around the National Uplift Programme, one is around new investment. And the third stream to the investment is actually to keep the wheels in motion, to maintain a business as normal due to the increased costs. We all face either through our businesses or through our work that we conduct ourselves or through our private lives, the increase in costs of living. Around pay costs, around pay awards increments and national insurance, utility costs and fuel expenditure, building and maintenance and capital investment, ICT costs and licensing just cannot be avoided. We have inflation, we have uncertainty around the police remedy situation, which has been lingering for far too long. And also, as I've mentioned, the contributions to national programmes and ongoing collaboration. So there presents the challenges, and hopefully I've outlined some of the successes of the organisation, the success of the investment that has been made, not only through government grant or through Precept interest increase over the last twelve months, and that continues through, but also the area of investment of additional officers and where I intend to deploy those officers going forward. On the front line, investment in neighbourhood policing, response officers. But equally important is to build the infrastructure around the organisation so that we are a sustainable operating model. We have a sustainable operating model, but equally, if not more important, of course, is the financial situation of which we find ourselves in. So I'm going to hand over to John Lee, who's the Director of Finance and Resources, just to take us through some of the numbers and the actual detail in some sense at a high level around the medium-term financial strategy. So thank you, panel.
Okay, good afternoon, councillors. So for those that attended the pre-brief, don't worry, I'm not going to go through the same level of detail I did there, so I won't put you through that again. So just a few highlights really then on the finances. So what you've got in the pack is the MTFS document itself, it's in draft. We obviously will need to reflect following the meeting today and decisions and then take the final version to the Commissioner's Business Coordination Board in due course. So what you've got in that MTFS document is the detail around assumptions that we've built in, in terms of expenditure and funding assumptions, not only for next year, but also for the whole of the MTFS period out to twenty-five, twenty-six. It presents the draft revenue budget that we've got there, that's in Appendix C on page sixty-eight. The capital strategy is contained within that document. I think we picked it up this morning because it's an embedded document. You may not have been able to open that, but we certainly circulate that to you as a group post the meeting, if that is the case. But I'll touch on the main elements within the capital strategy as well. And then contained within the MTFS is the reserve strategy as well. So I'll just quickly pick through some of the key points in respect to some of those. And obviously, in developing this document, Matthew, as the Commissioner's CFO, holds my feet to the flames in terms of making sure that we're doing all the right things, the assumptions are prudent etcetera and reasonable in terms of what we're building in. So on the revenue budget, that in the draft is set to be a hundred-and-seventy-one-point-two million pounds for twenty-two, twenty-three. So that is an increase of nine-point-six million pounds from the current year budget of twenty-one, twenty-two. So that increase is in the similar ballpark to what we saw as we moved from twenty-twenty-one into twenty-one, twenty-two, and is largely driven, as the Chief and the Commissioner have outlined, in respect to the additional officers around uplift and the cost that that brings with it. As we move forward through the MTFS years, as we move out to the right, you'll start to see the levels of increase on the budget tail off a little bit. So they dropped to six-point-nine million, five-point-seven and three-point-nine based on our current assumptions. So that's as the immediate injection of uplift officers coming into the organisation is embedded and is in place, and we're not then having to continually increase the kind of police officer numbers within the budget. Just moving on then in terms of some of the key cost assumptions that we've got built into this. And the Chief has outlined sort of how much of this is actually within our control. So given the organisation, eighty percent is linked to police officer or police staff pay. That is the vast proportion of our budget, with a significant amount of the rest tied up in contracts and service delivery that we need that sits underneath and underpins the activities of the Constabulary. So the pay award, you'll be aware that we had zero pay award for twenty-one, twenty-two. We are expecting some catch-up in terms of the negotiations that will go through the pay award body. So at the moment, within this budget, we factored in three-and-a-half percent inflation. That's in line with other police forces across the country. There is a range clearly, or you know, police forces will take a slightly different view on that. But I think that range is probably in the region of two-and-a-half, three to four percent in terms of the pay award. So you know, that is driving a cost of over three million pounds in force and across our collaborated partners as well, where we're paying into those collaborated budgets as well. Pay increments, because we've got a lot more younger police officers, as the Chief has outlined, they will automatically progress up the pay scales, and that is driving additional cost that we are seeing more of now in terms of a one-point-three million pound additional cost in relation to pay increments. So there's an additional pressure within the budget there, again purely because of the uplift and the implications that that brings. We've got the national insurance contribution, you know, there's been media conversations around that. As far as we, you know, we haven't got any intelligence other than that it is happening. That's built into the budget, the funding has been provided as per the settlement. It's wrapped up in the overall call grant. So that's further one-point-four million pound of additional cost. And then the actual cost of bringing in the eighty-two officers for twenty-two, twenty-three is one-point-eight million pounds. That's not their full cost because that's a prorated amount because we recruit to those throughout the year. They won't all be joining us from the first of April. So just outlining some of those key kind of headline assumptions, particularly around the pay costs that we're having to absorb within this budget, probably gives you a feel for actually there's a significant amount of the nine-point-six million pound increase from current year to next that we aren't able to do anything about, and we do need to kind of build that in and absorb it. So how have we absorbed it? So I'll come on to the funding side of that in a minute. But again, Commissioner and Matt and Jim as well will push us for savings and efficiencies, as you would expect. That's their role in terms of holding us to account. So we delivered five-point-one million pounds of savings in the current year. This budget in terms of twenty-two, twenty-three has got a further two-point-six million pounds worth of efficiencies within it and savings. A further one-point-four million is scheduled and planned for twenty-three, twenty-four. Dropped a little bit to half a million, and then it picks up again in terms of a million pounds in the final year of the MTFS. So we're looking that far out in terms of the efficiency and savings plans that we can bring into the budget to offset that growth as much as we can. But again, the Chiefs outlined it well. We've got twenty percent of the budget to influence savings. That twenty percent is somewhere in the region of thirty million. So when I add up all those savings and efficiencies, that's ten million pounds that we will have taken out over a five-year period starting in the current financial year. So you can see the kind of gearing that we're talking about here in terms of actually how difficult it is becoming to find efficiencies and savings. So just moving on to the grant funding. So we did get a three-year CSR settlement, which is good news. It gives us what we have been asking for as the sector, policing sector for three years. So that's in terms of grant, as well as precept flexibility over the three years, although today we're only talking about precept for twenty-two, twenty-three. The national increase is five-hundred-and-fifty million going into twenty-two, twenty-three, again reflecting the final year of the uplift programme. The national increase then in terms of that settlement reduces to a hundred million in twenty-three, twenty-four, and then a hundred-and-fifty million the year after. So it becomes much more modest in terms of the national picture, in terms of those ongoing grant increases. So we've planned that in. We have got an additional five-point-one million pound of grant funding coming into the budget this year, which is obviously helping to offset all those pay costs etcetera that I've outlined. Going forward, we're only expecting something in the region of about a million pounds per annum in terms of additional grant coming through from those headline settlement numbers. We haven't got the detail yet, we did only get a one-year detailed grant settlement, but the figures at a national level were confirmed. So there is a little bit of uncertainty still around that, but it gives us a much firmer position than what we have had in recent years. So that five-point-one million pound increase in twenty-two, twenty-three is, like I say, is really helpful, but when you set that against the nine-point-six million pounds of which kind of eight million-ish is linked to the pay, it doesn't cover it, which is why we're here and the Commissioner outlined right at the top of the meeting, the need to request an increase in the precept. And the other thing, when the Chief has outlined around the the Cambridgeshire and the Constabulary being one of the lowest funded in the country based on the current funding formula, that's really important in terms of the gearing that it creates for us in terms of precept and grant funding. So the grant funding we generate is fifty-six percent of that budget. So the remaining, you know, nearly half of our funding is coming through the precept, just in terms of the way that that has built up historically and over time. So if anything, the precept conversation for us in Cambridgeshire is as equally important as the government funding settlement as well, when you consider it in the context of that gearing and how we're then able to meet the costs that are driven through the business. So then there were some of the headlines on the revenue budget. In terms of reserve strategy, we've worked hard and linked to removing reserves out of the revenue budget is that kind of efficiency drive that we've had in terms of delivering those so that we can remove any reliance on reserves. That is, you know, from my and Matt's perspective, the only place to be. We shouldn't be setting budgets with reserves contained within them. So we're in a strong position in that context, which is good. We are within our reserve strategy seeking to maintain the general fund reserve. So this is the amount of general reserve unallocated or uncommitted in case there are any risks that hit the constabulary that are not known or unplanned for. We're looking to maintain that a five percent, and the medium-term financial strategy does that as well as setting aside some earmarked reserves, again relatively modest amounts in terms of some of the other risks that we know we're carrying around. Pension remedy that the Chief has outlined, emergency services, mobile communications programmes, and also insurance provisions that we need to cater for. And then the final thing for me really is just a couple of words on the capital requirements and the capital strategy. So it's largely, as you've seen in previous years, in terms of not a great deal of change or new projects coming into the capital programme. There's three main estates programmes around the Southern Police Station, as already been mentioned. The training facility that we're looking to build with our Bedfordshire and Hertfordshire partners in collaboration, as well as a firing range, which is a collaborated. Hertfordshire partners in collaboration, as well as a firing range, which is a collaborated project as well. So they're the three main estates projects which will all be related to build and construction. The main thing to say around those is that particularly the Southern Police Station, the profile of that has moved to the right in terms of where we were originally planning the expenditure from last year, but the projects are still in there. The other areas around fleet and ICT, we've seen a spike in ICT in twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five because of VSMCP. So when that comes in, we will need to kit all of the officers out, and that is literally all of them, with new radio, mobile phone technology so that they can link into the emergency services network. Again, there's uncertainty around that in terms of when it will actually fall, that's a national programme that affects fire and obviously ambulance as well in that regard. So again, significant costs that we're having to absorb in the context of, in effect, no capital funding coming from government to help us, which again is another cost which gets driven into the revenue budget in terms of borrowing and revenue contributions to capital. And then the final thing I will say is the only change really in terms of the capital programme is around sustainability and net carbon zero, if I've got the terminology right, around the estate in terms of looking to see where we can reduce the carbon emissions across the estate, as well as our fleet. We've got four hundred and fifty vehicles on our books, predominantly petrol and diesel at the moment, so we've got a job to do in terms of moving the agenda forward that way as well. And again, we're working with other emergency services to kind of work the strategies out to take that forward, as well as sort of national collaboration in that space as well. So they're the main changes in terms of the capital programme. And as you'd be aware, because of the no capital grant funding coming through, we are having to look at additional borrowing in order to make all of that happen, which again is factored into the revenue budget, and I think is affordable and probably still at a prudent level. It reaches one and a half percent of the total revenue budget by the end of twenty-five, twenty-six, taking into account all of those capital construction projects, which is probably less than you perhaps see in some of your local authority bodies as well. So that was it from me. Probably closed there unless Commissioner was...
Thanks, John. So Chair, but my final sort of words, and actually Matt hasn't come in there, but I think John mentioned, is the Section 151 Treasurer, my office, who gives me that assurance around the financial planning that John and the team have done, and which I am grateful that he has given me that assurance on the plan. So Chair and panel, you've heard from myself, you've heard from the Chief Constable and the Director of Resources, that the key reason for asking for this increase in preset is around more police officers. And that to me is what our public, what our residents, what our communities want. That's what this will do, that's what's being delivered, and I put the proposal for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you to you and to your team for both the pre-brief presentation and the detailed, in-depth explanation of the medium-term financial strategy that you've provided today. I will pass it over to members to ask any questions for clarification. Just before I do so, we as a panel need to bear in mind that our role today is not to scrutinise the medium-term financial strategy, but to scrutinise the Commissioner's proposal to increase the preset by what will amount to nine pounds ninety-nine per year for a band-y property. So that is what we're making a decision about today, and our power, we have the power to veto that proposal, in which case the Commissioner would have to go away and come back with a different proposal for us to consider in two weeks' time. So that is the power that we have available to us to exercise today. So our questioning should be mindful of making that decision about whether the proposal for the council tax increase is acceptable or not. councillor Bradnam.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for your presentations, both previously and today. So I'm going to move this over here. Really helpful. And we're charged with the responsibility of making sure that we're getting good value from money through you. And I just, one of the things, I was very interested to hear Chief Constable illustrating the length of time, the costs of staff, and thank you very much for explaining all of that about the additional sixty-two, then eighty-two, then a further eighty-two officers, and the financial constraints that puts on the service. But I just wanted to check with you what amount of investment that you're putting into retention, because clearly with that much investment in recruiting of new staff, you know, with any organisation where you have members or staff, the costs of retention are less than recruiting new. And I just wanted to check whether the Police and Crime Commissioner feels that good value for money is going to be obtained if we were to approve this grant through making sure that we retain all the officers, as many as we can. Because I noticed that Chief Constable Nick Dean explained that frontline officers might be on the ground for three, three and a half years, and indeed in the first five months of recruitment, it's hard to keep people on, but once they're in, they're in and they're there for three and a half years on the ground, and then might be moving into different roles. But the average length of service for constables, you said across the county, was five to six years, and I just wondered what efforts are being made to increase that retention? I have another question, which perhaps might come into it, is can somebody explain, Mr Lee explained move to the right, does that mean the expenditure is moved to a later year? Thank you. Okay, so the substantive question.
Thank you, councillor, and you make a really important point. It's all well and good recruiting hundreds and hundreds of police officers, but what we need to make sure is that we retain them, that the job is attractive to them, that they're given those opportunities and the training around them. The Chief Constable mentioned earlier, because I think the direct question is, am I assured around the value for money? Yes, I am, because as Chief Constable said, the constabulary has a really good rate on attrition. Very few people leave the constabulary. That's really good news. Having said that, we did mention some of those other functions like vetting, you know, we want to keep our good people, but we want to make sure that where those behaviours and standards aren't met, that we're dealing with those as well. But Chief Constable, is there anything you'd like to add on that point?
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner, thanks for the question. The short answer is yes, I can be assured we're doing everything possible. And that comes under a number of stages. First of all is the attraction, and as I've said, you know, I have just shy of three hundred people on the waiting list to join the organisation, the applications are consistently good within the constabulary, both in terms of attraction, recruitment, within the recruitment, we have invested within the recruitment team, and also in terms of consistency of actually how we interview and select officers, not only on a national basis, but equally importantly within Cambridgeshire. And the focus very much on where you describe about maintaining the officers within the organisation, comes about the slight adjustment within the questioning and the probing within officers trying to join the organisation. So very much now we're focused upon resilience, upon personal resilience within the organisation, about how officers are going to cope not only with the demands of shift work and pressures of demand, et cetera, but equally about their own personal resilience. I've described the continuous professional development units, they're embedded with on the districts, we have two districts for a reminder to the panel, one based in Peterborough, one based in Cambridge City, covering the north and the south of the county, and we built those off the investment last year. And actually, we've invested heavily within those around HR professionals and also about health and wellbeing personnel. We've got a substantial health and wellbeing service within the organisation, and I'm particularly proud of the work that our people and professionalism department have done in that to maintain the attrition rates low. Just to give you a flavour, attrition rates within student officers over the last twelve months has been as low as two point six percent, which equates to around fifteen officers. And across the whole organisation, I think the attrition rate sits at somewhere around six or seven percent, which again, when compared nationally, is very favourable. So not only through the investment, but also through the recruitment, the attraction, and then the ongoing investment around specialisms. So those continual professional development units are being expanded this year to cover detective resilience and other specialisms. So a lot of work, just to reassure you, councillor, that we do do an awful lot to retain officers once they're in the organisation. So, you know, I can sort of guarantee to the Commissioner that everything is being done possible, which are then reflected in the attrition rates. And equally, it's not just about people not leaving but being dissatisfied with their job. We have set up an extensive survey, and it's called a big conversation, which ranges from conversations by me directly with the frontline, either as I go about or through formal consultations, or actually through our people and professional departments, which engage with officers throughout their, certainly their early career, just to ensure that we are doing everything possible to support them. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. May I come back with one? Thank you, Chair. So thank you very much for that, I'm glad to hear, because it's certainly easier to keep staff than to gain them for fresh, so thank you. The other thing I wanted to ask about was PCSOs, and I'm glad to see in your Appendix C the planned expenditure on, sorry, did I say PCCs? PCSOs is what I meant. I'm glad to see the planned funding for PCSOs and their pay allowances continuing, but it doesn't seem to get very much bigger. And so I kind of wanted to ask, how many PCSOs does one thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand, or one million, or one point eight million get you in twenty-two, twenty-three? And does the increase in funding to twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-six get you more PCSOs, or does it just cover inflation?
Councillor, I do know the answer. I do know the answer, but clearly that's operational. I'll just say before, I hand over to the Chief Constable. I'm often asked about PCSOs, they're highly valued. But of course, we have other members of staff, not just police officers, call handlers, scenes of crimes officers, and they will all be in that list. They are all really, really important in supporting the organisation. And the reason I mention that, that's why I'm before you today, because ultimately, as John has said, eighty percent of the organisation is staff. If we were to make any further savings, you would have to look there. I don't want to do that, the Chief Constable doesn't want to do that, our communities don't want to do that. So Chief Constable, PCSOs please.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner. And I'd just re-emphasise my commitment, as with the Police and Crime Commissioner, about the value of PCSOs. Last year I had to make some really difficult decisions based upon the sustainability of the financial position going forward, and that resulted in a fifty percent reduction in PCSOs across the county to forty on our books. We currently stand at about thirty-two PCSOs out of the forty. My plans in order to not recruit to those eight vacant posts at this present time is really twofold. One is to balance the books, but secondly and importantly is that about eleven PCSOs took the opportunity and the brave steps to move from a PCSO to be a police constable here last year. They're in their early part of training, and, you know, my commitment to them was twofold. One is that if you transfer from a PCSO to a PC, and you have come from a community neighbourhood team of which you've invested hours and days and months and years in actually building up those community connections, is that if you want to go back to those community teams as a police constable, I will ensure that that is done, and many of them are taking up that offer. And the other thing, you know, to be really candid, is that people do join the police service, and it's not for them. They would rather be a police staff, or they would rather be a PCSO, and perhaps, you know, what they envisaged on that transfer was not right. And so I wanted to maintain a few gaps within my PCSO establishment, that if they really wanted to go back to being a PCSO after they had trialled their initial training and early steps of independence as police constables, then I had a job to offer them that I didn't lose that investment from the organisation. Thankfully, none of those PCSOs have left, and they are thriving as police officers. And so in the early parts of the financial year, I'll be sitting now with my HR team and my training team in order to fill those gaps back up to the forty establishment.
Thank you very much. So that sounds like that was a very successful injection of opportunity for those PCSOs to take on a commissioned role, which is encouraging. Thank you.
councillor Norton.
Oh, sorry. The one question was though, does the increase in money going right, to use Mr Lee's expression or Matthew's expression, the small increase in money, does that refer to inflation rather than increasing numbers of PCSOs or staff? Because it goes from one point seven four four million to one point nine seven six in twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yeah, so you're exactly right.
It's inflation.
It's inflation we cost, yeah.
So it's keeping the same number? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Commissioner, for your presentation, and also thank you, Chief Constable. So we have eighty-two officers, but we don't have the full funding to maintain those officers. Is that a national problem, or are we being particularly hard-hit in that respect in Cambridge? I've got two other questions, but maybe could you answer that one first?
So councillor, thank you. I'm not going to comment on the national, I have some, you know, some knowledge of that, but I mean, my focus is on Cambridgeshire and Peterborough. I mean, when we talk about the funding, we've had the presentation, I mean, at the moment, it is what it is, fifty-six from government, the rest from preset. What was mentioned by the Chief Constable was that core grant, and I think, you know, this is really important, because in Cambridgeshire, we are one of those counties where it's not far off a half and half split. That's very different elsewhere, particularly in our urban areas, where it really is very different. The important thing for me is making a real strong case to government around the future funding and that work that's going on at the moment. What we're doing, we've already scheduled meetings with Home Office officials, and besides that, I'll be making political conversations in relation to putting the very best case forward. And I'd also be looking, hopefully, to the panel to support me, along with our Members of Parliament moving forward. So what I can say is this, I'm not aware, this doesn't mean it hasn't happened, but I'm not aware of any other Police and Crime Commissioner who haven't gone to their panels asking for full flexibility on their preset, so perhaps that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you. So my other question comes back to the point that was made earlier about young recruits and the need for training, and obviously the costs of training, if you're bringing in young enthusiastic people and they have, it's an expensive business to train them. So I just wanted to be reassured that there will be sufficient funding for training in ethical policing, which of course is really, really important, and I know that that might be. You mentioned continuing professional development, does that include training in ethical policing? Maybe deal with that one, and I've got a final question then, thanks.
I will hand it over to the Chief shortly, but as this panel is aware, ethical policing is a top priority, is in the Police and Crime Plan, and I know it's a top priority for the Chief Constable. I just wanted to do a bit of the Chief's thunder here as well, because my office also runs independent scrutiny panels, which we've set up around stop and search, around use of force, and obviously our independent custody visitors. So that's my reassurance around some of those ethics. But Chief Constable, would you like to take that question, please?
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner. Yeah, I can confirm that continual professional developments units obviously support officers within their first years of training, and particularly not just around the nuts and bolts of being police officers, but as I said, the how, the values of the organisation are really important. And over the last three years since I've been in post, as I said, we've developed my corporate plan, and at the centre of those corporate plan... my corporate plan, and at the centre of those corporate plan are the values. And they are, you know, if ever I have a chat, as I do to every new recruit, it is about the way you do things is so important these days, not only because of the scrutiny, but because it's actually the right thing to do. The national agenda around violence against the women's, against girls, sorry, has brought in that scrutiny around integrity, around vetting, around professional standards, and you know, within our collaborated budget, we are putting significant investment within that area of business to ensure, as I said, people with the right values enter the organisation, and once they're into the organisation, they maintain those standards of professional conduct, and should they breach them, we have methods, you know, to actually deal with them, because no one wants a corrupt officer or someone who's not upholding those values. So we do an awful lot, the Commissioner has mentioned the external scrutiny groups, as well as our own internal checks about the standards across the organisation. You're right, considerable investment around new recruits is vitally important, that we don't lose that investment. But equally important is those officers who've given years of service and are within the organisation, we still need to continually professionalise their skills and knowledge as operational policing changes by day to day.
And I've just got one final question. And Commissioner, we've spoken before about your concern and your push on improving the 101 service, and so I was just wondering whether, you know, the settlement that you're seeking will allow you to go on doing that.
So I mean, last year, you'll be very much aware, there was investment there. I will hand over to the Chief. This is an area that comes up time and time again. When I talk to communities, and in fact, I did a roundtable recently where I was giving some examples of 101. It was mentioned earlier that we have our internal holding to account meetings, and this is certainly one that comes up, I look at the figures, et cetera. Before handing over to the Chief though, this is an area that I will be holding the Constabulary, the Chief Constable, to account for. I know there's work going on, because I've been and visited them, I know that there are more staff, but what the public want is to see the results. And particularly, I received some feedback actually, around the online reporting. Recently, I had a number of people saying, you know, it's really good, going really well, really quick, and getting what they want, but it's still the telephone, and it's really important that we keep that service. We all know about the efficiencies, but we also know, and this is reality, that many of our residents and communities don't have access or are not comfortable in using that technology. The Police and Crime Plan is quite clear, you know, it's the ability for our communities to be able to contact the police and vice versa, so that still is a key priority for me. Chief Constable?
Thanks, Commissioner. Just in context, the number of calls on 999 systems entering the organisation on a daily basis probably sits around four hundred, and 101 non-emergency calls sit anywhere between a thousand and fourteen hundred, as they did earlier this week, actually. The number of web chats, so the channel shift onto our social media and web chat, we deal with about hundred and twenty web chats per day. And actually, what we've been innovative is, you know, accepting, of course, the Commissioner's point around the traditional pick up the telephone, equally as important is social media. And we've been one of the, well, we have been the first force in the region to set up a social media desk within the Demand Hub in our call centre, which tracks and responds to all inquiries of social media on a twenty-four hour basis. So the investment has been made, additional court takers have been placed within the Demand Hub. The number of calls, as I said, has increased within, and the number of inquiries has increased within the Demand Hub, but actually, their percentage against the targets of ten percent pick up on 999 calls, and equally around 101 calls is still pretty impressive. We've still got work to do, because one call abandoned or lost could be, you know, a really critical element of that. What we are assured of is that every call within the organisation, into the organisation is triaged first, and then put into a thrive system or an assessment of risk in order to prioritise those calls as we do. So we initially thrive every call, assess every call for risk. So if they've misplaced their call off a 101 into an emergency call, it's immediately transferred into an emergency call, and likewise, emergency calls are transferred back into the public system. But yeah, investment has been made, the Commissioner holds me to account on my call handling performance. I'm over there regularly assuring myself that they are working to the best of their ability. I have to pay credit to the Demand Hub over the last eighteen months, particularly during the pandemic. A lot of my organisation, even what we class as traditional policing has removed, has moved to perhaps a more remote working, but there are certain elements of policing where it still needs public contact. The Demand Hub has been one of those where people have come into the Demand Hub day in, day out, and been under very trying circumstances under Covid, and maintain their professionalism under very difficult circumstances. So I'm really proud of my staff within the Demand Hub of what they've done over the last twelve to eighteen months and before that, and they continue to provide a very good service. We can always learn, we can always improve, and that is the ethos of the Demand Hub and the command structure within there.
Thank you. Councillor Sharp.
Thank you, Chair. I've got three points or questions, but one of them's been touched on, but August. The first one is a more detailed thing, and I'm thinking really of the, it's more to John on the finance side, I'm thinking of somebody looking at the accounts, because on page sixty-eight, we've got a typo on a line called Erso, where it doesn't affect the bottom line, but if you look at it literally, it's showing just over three billion pounds worth of spend on that particular line, so it's not rounded down, and similarly, the current year's budget, but say, I'm more thinking of somebody else looking at those accounts. It should be three million and seventy-five, which it adds to, but the figures are, if you take it in thousands, it's literally three billion. Second point is, I'm really pleased to see, and I've been on this panel, I think, about four, five years now, in previous years, we've had to balance the budget using reserves, and I'm pleased that we've not had to go down that route. And the final point is, Councillor Doughton touched on it really, and the Commissioner answered it really, if you look at the lines in terms of police pay and officer pay, and then look at the way it's being funded with the formula grant and the precept, it is very tight going forward if we don't get this uplift of money, extra monies from government, and I'm sure the Commissioner is totally aware of that. So I think personally, we need to support the Commissioner in what, in any thing that he does towards government to try and get, you know, an extra funding for the county. So there are more comments than questions, I suppose, but happy to feedback.
No, thank you for the comments. I'm sure John will take the financial one. Yeah, I will do my absolute best to get a better settlement. There will be winners and losers out of this review, potentially. I can't see how we will be losers, given that we are right at the bottom of the pit anyway, but I will certainly be calling on yours and everybody else that we can find to support our case, and there will be a significant piece of work done in the near future to make that case, which I'll be sharing with this panel. John, the accounting issue.
Yeah, thanks, councillor. It is okay, I just have to zoom my screen, there is a decimal point in there, so it's a formatting issue where those two numbers you've picked up are to three decimal places. You're right, it doesn't affect the bottom line, it's just the way that table's pulled in, but yeah, it's quite small on the page, isn't it? So yeah, absolutely, definitely. And then you're right, in terms of going forward, it is tight, we know what the funding envelope is in totality now, and we can't breach that. So again, there is work to do, whilst we've got a balanced position, there will be sort of further conversations around how we continue to find savings and efficiencies, because there will be other pressures that are not yet known, so it is tight, you're right.
Councillor Bywater?
Thank you very much, Chairman. Commissioner and Chief Constable, thank you very much. You opened your address to the panel with your concerns about raising council tax. Every April, I get a number of people contact me about asking me why council tax has been increased, whether that's the county, the fire service. But I'm glad to say, I think you provided really good evidence for me to go back to my constituents and say the reasons why we're going to put up the council tax in relation to this precept for the police service. It's also good to hear some of the stuff that's being done, and the flexibility of the force, when the Chief talks about the reduction in burglary and theft from the person, those sort of personal crimes have been reducing over the last twelve months, given we've been in Covid. But also, it's great to hear the flexibility of the force in relation to those other crimes that are now starting to become a priority. So, and we need to invest in those, because we have to stay ahead of the curve when it comes to some of these crimes, because they're fast, they develop quickly, and we need to be with them. It's also great to hear about the detective resilience scheme that's being introduced, given that we've got a young workforce. In order to detect and prevent crime, we need good detectives, so that's really good to see that, and you know, that's going to be money well spent. Just a point that Alan picked up on in relation to future funding, I think it's crucial that us as a panel really push that agenda and row in behind the Commissioner, because I think that's crucial for us and a key role for us to play. One question I have got, Commissioner, and I'm looking at John and Matthew here really, is, and I've discussed this with Matthew in a different environment, is inflation, that dreaded word inflation. You touched on three point five percent, I've been in other arenas where we're talking one point nine percent, and the figure is sort of fluctuates between that and five percent. How comfortable are we at that figure of three point five percent, given what's happening and, you know, the potential impacts that could have on us financially if it jumps to five percent?
Thank you, councillor, some very helpful comments, and particularly around how you as elected representatives explain to your communities the unwelcome news of a tax increase. I hope that between myself and the Chief Constable, we've been able to give that explanation, and you know, there is some great work going on there. For me, the number one message is around more police officers in our communities, keeping us safe, because that's the one thing that people tell me that they want. Matt, you're going to take that one?
Good afternoon. In terms of inflation, yeah, absolutely, Councillor Bywater, we've had a number of conversations, haven't we, around whether two percent is correct, or there's something around ten percent for other factors when we talk about energy and things. But I think from a pay perspective, which is really the predominant issue here, police services didn't get any pay award last year, other public sector bodies did, even though obviously government gave a clear indication that they didn't want any to be budgeted for or paid. So I think there's a real, a real risk that actually for police services is going to be around the three, three and a half percent mark, which is why we believe prudently it's the right estimate to make. Will it be more than that? Well, I think pay bodies and the negotiation process will determine that, but I think government will clearly want to keep those levels at a reasonable amount, certainly in the next financial year and moving forward. I think there will be more pressure on pay going through the year, through the year, and certainly into the twenty-three, twenty-four financial year, because whilst we're being told, and again, the economists out there amongst us, we're being told that it's a blip at the moment and it will come back down, we are not seeing that necessarily come down as quickly as we'd like. So I think as it stands at the moment, the budget that John and the Constabulary have presented is a prudent one, but clearly, we're going to have to keep it under pretty close observation as we move through the medium term.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. Councillor Bradham?
Thank you, Chair. So we need to consider whether this, whether we're happy to agree this precept, and one of the things that weighs into our decision-making is the response to the survey. And I'll draw you to page twenty-one of the precept report at eight point two, where you talk about the number of people who took part in the survey, which was 1,566 people. And admittedly, that is more than who took part in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, when there were 1,270 responses. But it's still, we don't have the total numbers, but I've just taken 1,566 people and divided them as a percentage of the number of people in the band D properties, which is the table that we've got below, so just as a proportion of those properties, and it comes out as naught point five percent of the population responding. And clearly, if you took not only the number of people in each of those houses and multiplied it up by 296,000 properties, this is a very small proportion of our whole population responding to this survey. I appreciate response rates to surveys are not easy, so what I'm concerned about is that we shouldn't actually put much weight on the sixty-four percent, because it's a very small population who are motivated to look at your report and give it some consideration. And there's probably lots and lots of people who are not motivated to look at your report who this will affect as well, and you know that as well as I do. So I just want to be mindful of what might we do in future to try to increase the engagement, and I know you worked hard getting public engagement, and I know you worked through us as district and county councillors to try and get people to respond to the survey. But I'd also like another year for us to be engaged with about the nature of the questions, and where this might be publicised, and how it might be put in front of the residents, so that we can try to get even better engagement in another year. So my question to you is, is there anything you think you can do differently to increase the engagement with the survey that you do on the precept? Thank you.
Councillor, you make a very good point, and none of that is lost on me. We worked hard, we worked hard using all the usual channels, lots of hard-to-reach communities as well. I personally did lots of media and spoke to your good self and many others. I'm also further aware that, you know, this is an issue across, well, the public sector, because we have those networks as well. But you asked me, is there more that can be done? Well, there must be, there must be. I don't know exactly what it is at the moment, but I will commit to progressing that, we already have, and my team has. And I'll be, I would welcome any suggestions, views, comments, ideas from anybody, including your good selves, but of course, there are professionals out there that can help us. I would really, really want more responses to that survey, that's, you know, the more the better, absolutely, and we will work hard to do that. I think you touched on the point, you know, the reality is, we find this isn't unique to what we've done here, as I say, Matt works with the fire service as well, we know across public sector, we struggle, but there's got to be a way of getting a better response. So I'm really open to ideas, and we'll work hard to look at that for next year, if of course, we are going out next year.
Thank you.
Thank you. In fact, I was going to suggest that I think there probably are ideas around this room and elsewhere for how to get a better response, and I think perhaps we should have a discussion about how we might do that, even as perhaps a workshop, some script, just to get ideas thrown in, because there are some simple things, I mean, just following up on, so if you've shared information with an organisation, just following up with them to make sure that they have actually distributed it, and then following up again, say, could you send it out again? Because actually, what happens is the first contact primes people, they kind of think, yes, oh, I must do that. It's the second contact actually tends to be the one that motivates the action. So there's some really quite simple methods to improve the response rate.
If I may just come back as well, I mean, a good point about the numbers, but the other bit that concerns me is around the diversity issue in the ages. I mean, I, you know, pragmatically, I understand why, you know, probably more people over sixty, you know, they're probably more interested, they'll be council taxpayers, you know, I think we all understand that, but how do we reach younger people? Because we have younger people who are paying the taxes, and regardless of whether they are or not, that survey was asking some very specific questions, which is very useful for the data collection around crime types, et cetera. So that's a piece of work as well, it's not just how many, it's who we're targeting, who we're getting.
Thank you. Did you actually, I know it's, did you go into schools and talk about it?
So I've been into colleges, I've been into schools, I've done online, and I mean, to be honest, I didn't ask them to fill in surveys on this occasion, because we weren't at that stage. at that stage. But on that subject, that's a useful key in actually, that my team are currently going through quite an extensive engagement programme with schools and colleges, not least of which, you know, you'll be aware, my crime, police and crime plan, early intervention, youth engagement, oh, and we've just opened up a youth fund as well, which hopefully you're all aware of. If you're not, we'll get the link out so as elected members, you can look at that and bid into our youth fund. But the answer to your question is a big yes, that's an area I really do want to get into. I've already been to schools and colleges, I thoroughly enjoyed it, really engaging, and it's really important. It's important for me to do that, but the Chief Constable also talked about, you know, the safer schools and all that work as well. So important for me as Police and Crime Commissioner, important for policing, and an offer here certainly as elected representatives, and I know we have an independent member very keen in this area as well, but if you have schools in your areas, I won't, I think the Bedfordshire Police and Crime Commission made a commitment to visit every school in Bedfordshire, but Bedfordshire is smaller than Cambridgeshire and Peterborough. But if there is an opportunity, we will do our best to get out there, and we're putting together a package as well, so looking forward to that.
Thank you. Councillor Collis.
Thank you, Chair. Most of what I was going to say was covered about talking about young people who, you know, I think have a very different relationship with policing than people over 65. But this is just a plea really about engaging with minority ethnic communities as well. The figures, I mean, I note that there's a quite sizable number of people preferring not to say, we obviously don't know who they are, but the figures from minority ethnic communities are disappointingly low, I think. And particularly, can we please look at how we engage with traveller communities as well? That is quite, no, that figure's really low too. And I think it's important, you know, given some of the legislation that's happening, you know, going, being passed at the moment, that we look at how we engage with GRT communities. Thank you.
So the answer to your question, councillor, is I absolutely agree, we should be engaging with all of our communities as best we can. Some are harder to reach, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't make all the efforts to do that. And once again, you know, I don't have all the answers on how to do that, and I'm very happy to listen and take on board any recommendations as to how we do that. In your capacity of supporting me moving forward, I welcome that very much.
I'd be happy to talk separately about engaging with GRT communities. We obviously do that, quite a lot of that work as a city council, so perhaps we can have that conversation.
I had just some observations to share too. Firstly, to thank you very much for including a list of acronyms. I think that should be a standing item in the, in future agendas, although I noticed that John Lee added one just now which isn't included, which is VSMCP, so that might be one to add to the list. But that really is helpful, especially for new members of the panel who won't be familiar with all of the jargon that is used. One of the, I noticed that you are undertaking to analyse the feedback, not just in responses to the question about the precept, but the other questions. One of them really stood out to me as being potentially quite alarming, 4.7 the perception data on a scale of 1 to 10, with 1 being very unsafe and 10 being very safe, how safe do you feel in Cambridgeshire and Peterborough? Well, 21% selected between 1 and 3, i.e. very unsafe to pretty unsafe. Now, even allowing for a degree of exaggeration, that does suggest to me that there are a lot of people who are living potentially in fear of their lives or in fear of a partner or just feel very vulnerable. That certainly bears deeper analysis, I think you'll agree. One of the observations I had was the, in terms of the allocation to overtime. Now, one might think that the reason why the police spend a lot on overtime and why officers are asked to do a lot of overtime is because of a shortage of officers to do the work that's required. Would it be a reasonable expectation that now with more officers, there will be less need for overtime? Or is there a kind of an expectation of a commitment to overtime within an officer's contract, if you like?
I mean, that's an operational question, I'll hand over to the Chief Constable.
Thanks, Commissioner, thanks, Chair. There's no expectation when officers join that they need overtime, but actually, the amount of overtime, one could reasonably sort of expect that that decreases as the officer numbers increase. I would put out there that the actual offences and incidents and crimes that the officers are investigating are becoming far more complex. To pull together a file of sufficient quality and depth for Crown Prosecution Service, for instance, has really increased in terms of the amount of work that officers need to do once they get someone arrested and in a position to charge. And in addition, you know, policing has become a mutual aids sort of organisation really nationally, and we've supplied officers down to, you know, up to COP26, down to G7. We have a number of, you know, Cambridge City, for instance, is the city of protest in one respect and freedom of speech, and therefore, there isn't probably a weekend go by where we're not policing or monitoring a protest. Over the last 18 months, we've seen protest activity and demonstrations such as Black Lives Matters, such as XR, such as, you know, climate change, all of that is becoming the very nature of what we have to deal with now. And at very short notice, very much the planning around those operations comes into police notification, very late notice, which then incurs overtime. So there is an expectation that we reduce it. John has put in some very good schemes around the monitoring of overtime to ensure the scrutiny is there. But actually, you know, that is part of policing in terms of the allocation of overtime going forward, the very nature and change in demographics and what we deal with does provide us with some challenges in terms of how we flex resource. And I would also add that despite those officers, you know, they are very young in service, and they need time to embed, they need time to be recruited, so they're not instantly impacted upon policing numbers across the county. It's a three-year now under the police educational qualification system to get qualified as a police officer. Clearly, they are out on the streets, independent, far beyond the three years. But again, they need support in terms of their operational business.
Thank you. So jumping back to the survey, I did note in the report that although the option was given to people to respond by telephone, in fact, nobody did. That both suggests that people who don't have the ability to interact online weren't, either weren't aware of the ability to respond by telephone or were choosing not to. But that too, I think, kind of needs a bit more analysis, why that failed to attract any responses. I think before we move to the vote, I just want to just clarify a point you made in terms of the work that you've commissioned on the future funding and that you would like our support in submitting that to the Police Minister or to government. Could you just give us some idea of the timescale of that so that we understand whether we need to sort of pre-agree support for that, or whether we'll have an opportunity to see something at the next panel meeting? Or if you can just clarify that for us.
So I mean, the work started, I'm looking at Jim now, but what we're looking at doing, obviously with the constabulary, is putting together the case, the business case for change, and then obviously will be up against every other police force in the country as well. So I know that, Jim, I don't know if you want to say anything to this, I know that that's already started, but when it comes to those timescales, in fact, I think we've got a meeting with the Home Office next month, 9th of March, so we need to get something together pretty quick. So I think a lot of that's going to have to be sort of virtual and rather than in time for the next panel meeting. But I see this, it will progress, just because we have something for that meeting, that's not the end of it, because this is going to be going on for a couple of years, the actual review process. But we need to move fairly quickly, so we'll get something to you and hopefully to panel members, so that you can feed in, and when we've got something, we can distribute that as well.
Okay, so Pat's talking about a private briefing for you to give us an update and for us to give you a steer on what our, you know, give you our thoughts on it, but without any sort of formal weight. Does that seem reasonable with members?
I would be very happy with that. As I say, we've got to shout with one big loud voice to government, you know, to get a fairer deal for Cambridgeshire and Peterborough, so any support would be welcome.
Okay, well, I think if the panel's going to add its signature, if you like, to a letter, then obviously that will need to come to a formal meeting. But I think if, as you say, this is going to take a while to get to the end. Okay, so unless there are any other questions on the precept report, I'm going to put it to you whether you wish to veto the proposal. So this is, so a vote is to veto. So on that, is there any, are there any members who wish to veto the precept, the proposed precept? Are there any members who wish to abstain on a vote? Any members who wish to vote against the vetoing? I think that's unanimous. Do any members wish to make any recommendation that we'd like to pass back to the Commissioner? Councillor Bradnam.
Chairman, perhaps it would be helpful for this panel to form a letter. I think this was something you might be thinking of doing anyway, to give him a guidance on our views in the process of having his meetings on the 9th of March with the Home Office about the items that we talked about before. And I will mention it again particularly because of the matter I raised about the domestic homicide reviews, that might be an additional thing we might want to put into that letter about, that we feel that should come from central funding. But, you know, that might be as a third thing on a letter where other things are raised, just to give you a guidance on our views.
Well, I think the Commissioner's made clear that his recommendation to us is that we wait on, sort of moving on that particular thing about the domestic homicide review that he has that in hand, and I'm happy to accept that unless any other members wish to take a more urgent path on that. But I'm not quite sure what the panel itself can achieve, the Commissioner can't on that.
I was simply thinking that it might be helpful to the Police and Crime Commissioner to have our views, maybe not as a formal letter, but as a communication to him of our views, but it's up to you to decide what you think is best.
Well, I think that has been communicated through this meeting and through the previous meeting, and it is documented in the recommendation we made to the Commissioner at the last meeting. So I think at this stage, I'm happy for that to kind of run its course until we hear back from the Commissioner on how the progress he's, you know, what he is doing, what progress he is achieving with that. Going back to your earlier point about a letter to the Minister, that is what we did last year. If members would like me to do that again, I'm happy to, but I'm also mindful that the Commissioner's made us aware of a piece of work that he's also commissioned, which is along the same lines, which I suspect will be more effective. I mean, we did get a response from the Minister last time, but it wasn't in any way supportive of what we were saying, it was just simply a, you know, we believe that we're doing the right thing, and therefore, you know, I don't think we made an impression with that. We could send something similar again, but I think my recommendation to the panel would be to take up the Commissioner's invitation to support the work that he's doing on this, which I think will be more effective in the long run. Councillor Bywater?
Yeah, I think that's a very sensible approach, Chairman.
I agree with that proposal.
Okay, thank you. I mean, Commissioner, I think you already have a copy of the letter we sent last year. We can get you another copy just if that would be useful as reference, but that set out our views last year, which I don't think will have changed very much. Okay, so I think we've concluded that item. Thank you very much, everyone, for, I think, a very in-depth, detailed analysis of, and thank you for all the evidence you've provided to us to help us make a decision on this. So moving on to item eight, this is the item about the decisions, reporting the decisions by the Police and Crime Commissioner. And Commissioner, would you like to introduce this item?
Chair, thank you. So the decisions have been, obviously gone out with the papers. I'd really just happy to take any questions. And in fact, today, we've actually got our Director of Resources and Chief Constable with us as well, so I won't be doing it single-handedly if you do have any questions in relation to them.
Okay, thank you. So just to be clear, what we agreed at the last meeting was that decisions will be notified to the panel as they are made, as has always been the case. Members have the right to request that a decision be brought to the next panel meeting if they wish. But what we're looking at here is around how the panel, how the OPCC may or may not report advance notice of decisions. And I think the view of the panel was that some decisions are important enough and relevant enough to the panel's interest in scrutinising the delivery of the Police and Crime Plan, that advance notice would be helpful in allowing the panel to scrutinise in a timely manner. Although we will, although the subject of any decision will clearly feature in any sort of thematic report that we might commission, the worry was that we may not have looked at an area for maybe a year, and then a decision arrives that we haven't had a chance to look at because it just hasn't been in a report that we've commissioned. So what we're looking for is some way of having the OPCC to proactively notify the panel of areas of interest, which may result in a formal decision or may just be a key milestone or a step or action within delivery of the Police and Crime Plan. And I think that's what the panel is looking for. I'm just going to pass over to our Monitoring Office, who's just going to set the context in terms of the government, the advice from local government to the panels.
Thank you, Chair. Obviously, the report includes my comments on it in terms of the sort of statutory basis for how we interact with the Commissioner's office, and I agree with the findings that are set out in the report, and that's stated there, in terms of your, the legal boundaries of what you can and can't ask for. However, I think your request is in relation to improving how you work with the Commissioner's office, and I just wanted to read out the guidance, statutory guidance on this. So, working with the Commissioner's office, it's important for the panel to develop its work programme in conjunction with the Commissioner's office, drawing on the Commissioner's forward plan. This liaison enables the panel to focus on key matters in more timely ways with access to the necessary briefings and reports. It also ensures enough time is built in for the panel to add value to its work through more in-depth scrutiny in addition to the special functions if capacity allows. So panels should communicate with the Commissioner and his or her office to find out if there are any areas where assistance and support might be helpful. So I think that's very much where we are in terms of this report, just to set that out.
Yeah, and I think the key there was the reference to a forward plan, and we have discussed having sight of the delivery plan or something, and I think when you've responded before, the document that you have internally wouldn't be appropriate to share with the panel, it would need significant redaction in order to share. So I think what we're looking for is, can we have a simplified forward plan that really just focuses on key areas of likely decision-making or action that relate to delivery of the Police and Crime Plan, or that perhaps relate to a matter which has arisen since? Police and Crime Plan, or that perhaps relate to a matter which has arisen since the forming of the Police and Crime Plan, that maybe you have had to react to something that has changed since then. Again, being able to notify the panel, being obliged to notify the panel of that, to give us time to plan our own commissioning of reports and questioning.
I'll hand over to my Chief Executive at the moment. Thank you for the useful information, Neil Jair. My Chief Executive will often give me useful information as well. This, look, this is where I'm at with this panel. I understand your role, and you understand my role, that the way this works for me is that we work together. You will be holding me to account, on occasions giving me a hard time, but we work together, and I want to see that happen. On the detail of how that happens, I'll hand over to my Chief Executive.
Thank you, Commissioner. So the Commissioner and I had discussed this very issue of the forward plan prior to coming. So I think the paper sets out the correct sort of legal roles, responsibility about the routine reporting of decisions. What the Commissioner and I did discuss was precisely the, what could we provide instead in terms of a forward plan? So I've actually got here my suggestion as to how that would look, and effectively, that is, on a rolling basis, each panel meeting, giving you an indication of the areas that we're working on across the Police and Crime Plan and the Office over the course of the next six months, so that you can see exactly what's coming up. We've previously agreed that twice yearly, you will get a comprehensive report on what has been delivered, i.e. the annual report, and then a six-month interim that covers all of it. So as I say, and this will effectively give you foresight of what we are going to be working on. So I think that probably is, you know, all of us on the same page with that. So just as an example, in terms of the theme on supporting victims and witnesses, so we're going to be refreshing the Domestic Abuse and Serious Sexual Violence Partnership Strategy in the next quarter, we're going to be recruiting a Victims Policy Officer, review of provision for victims of crime requiring mental health support, recommissioning of specialist support services for young victims of crime, remodelling for provision of elements of domestic abuse support services in partnership with the local authority, review of the Victims Hub, you know, so that's the sort of thing that we've got on every single theme, because obviously we do have the delivery plan, it's just the mechanics of sharing that with you, whereas this is pretty straightforward, because my team are working on this and can easily produce this, just to give you the heads up in terms of what we're going to be working on.
Okay, that sounds pretty much like exactly what we're looking for. So can we therefore ask for that to be a standing item on the agenda, that that is included? Can I also suggest it looks a little bit more than six months ahead, I'm just aware that there are, in terms of forward planning, the reports that we commission, it probably makes sense for us to be able to look at least two meetings ahead, because some meetings have a, you know, are already sort of blocked out, if you like, so this one obviously looks at the precept, and the one in June looks at the annual report, and if we have a six-monthly one, then there's another meeting that's kind of blocked out. So there aren't actually all that many windows of opportunity for thematic reports. So I think we need to just make sure that we're able to pick up the most appropriate items to be commissioning reports on in the meetings where we have that flexibility. So I suggest six to nine months, but with, you know, with a bit of flexibility, obviously, on what that responds to, to your own, need to be flexible in your own work programme. But does that seem reasonable to panel members and to the Commissioner?
We can certainly accommodate that, Chair.
Excellent. I'm really pleased that that was satisfactorily resolved. I think one of the things that I didn't want the panel to beholden to was the way it was written in 5.7, where it says that the Commissioner would therefore request that where he feels that the support of the panel would be beneficial, that he is able to give the panel advance notice, notification of a decision for discussion with the panel. Now, I think this panel is confident in you, Commissioner, that you would exercise that judgement impartially, but I don't think we can always rely on that, and therefore I wouldn't want the panel to be, in a sense, having the Commissioner as the gatekeeper. So I think if we have a standing report which covers everything from the Chief Executive, then I think we will be entirely happy with that. So can I therefore put it to the panel that we recommend that we receive a standing item as discussed, as described, with a shortened forward plan covering six to nine months of the OPCC's business work?
Agreed.
Okay. Thank you. So I think that concludes the business in which the Commissioner and the Chief Constable and your Commissioner's staff need to be present. So thank you very much indeed for your time in attending today and for answering all of our questions, much appreciated.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, panel, for your support on this particular issue. As I'll go back to my very opening remarks, it's not, you know, something I want to be doing, increasing the taxes, but I, hopefully, we've given you all the information, and I thank you for your support, because I think that's important, that our communities understand that, you know, that it's not just myself, that together, we're working together to keep our communities safe, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
So the final item on our agenda then is the dates for the upcoming meetings. So we will not need the meeting which is in your calendar on the 16th of February, because that would only have been needed had we chosen to veto the precept. So the next meeting will be on 23rd of March, at the moment, that is planned to be here. And the main items on this, the agenda for that, will be around complaints. This is the complaints that the Commissioner's Office deals with, so that they have a responsibility for oversight of complaints that the Constabulary handle. So we want to receive a repeat report on that and how that is going, because that actually is a change of process. And also to review the process by which the panel handles complaints against the Commissioner or the deputy or the, I think against the Chief Executive, do we handle that? No, no, complaints against the Commissioner and the deputy, yeah. Because at the moment, I don't think we communicate the process very clearly, and I'm not sure that the public necessarily sees the way that we structure in the moment, where we delegate our responsibility to the Monitoring Officer at the OPCC, that maybe doesn't quite look right to the public, because it's essentially bouncing it back to the Commissioner's own office. I mean, in fact, the fact that he's a Monitoring Officer requires him or her to act entirely and partially in that, but I think we just need to make sure that we're communicating the process clearly and the explanation for why that process is the way it is. councillor Don'ton?
Chair, I think that councillor Bradham and I did let Jane know that on the 23rd of March, we are more than likely to have a full council meeting at South Cams, so that will exclude us. I think that's correct, isn't it? We did let her know.
Okay, I think we might need to reschedule then, because I think a clash like that is, that we know in advance, we would generally try and avoid. Are we able to consider other dates at this point, or do we need to arrange that offline?
When will you know the date of your meeting for a certain time?
It's full council at South Cams, which I chair.
No, no, obviously, is that a certain date? No, it's a second.
Yes, 23rd, and it's all afternoon, yeah.
I raised it with Jane early on, as soon as we saw that date, and a change in date was not forthcoming, but.
Might be helpful if we can have an idea of an alternative date, if that's possible, while we're all here.
It is a date, it is a date to be confirmed, we do have to leave it free.
Is that the second budget meeting then?
No, I mean, we have a council meeting on the 22nd of February, but we also need to leave.
Okay, it's like a reserve date, I say I'm with you, yes.
We did.
Because I think Jane would have looked at the date, so that's.
There are a couple of dates, as it's in the daytime, there are a couple of dates, but maybe if I send them down, send them round to you? Do you want it earlier or later in March?
Be perilously close to the pre-election period if we go any later in March, so it might be easier to bring it forward, mightn't it?
Yeah, so earlier, yeah.
Sorry, can I just add to that as well, that there is another complication, and that is that we're both involved with the Joint Development Control Committee, which is City and South Cams, and that tends to meet on Wednesdays, all day on a Wednesday. So I think there was an issue about moving it to Wednesday, the 16th, because that was a JDCC meeting, and I think it also involves councillor Bajant, if, I'm not sure if councillor Bajant is a sub on this committee. Yeah, yeah.
Just having a quick look at the room bookings, 7th, 8th or 9th, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of March might be available, I don't know whether you'd like to check your calendars.
Apologise to other members in the room.
Which dates again, Fiona?
I think it would be.
Which dates did you say, 7th, 8th and 9th?
Sorry Fiona, I was just checking the room bookings and council, and it would appear at this moment, 7th, 8th and 9th, which is Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of March, appears, this room appears to be available in the day, and there aren't any meetings until the evening, so that's a possibility.
Could we do this offline, could we?
Yes, certainly, of course.
Members missing, haven't we?
Yes, I'll send some dates round to see, thank you.
I'm sorry, Chair, but.
I mean, so if we can't find another date, the risk, because we can't go later because of the Purla period, we would effectively lose the meeting, because the next meeting would be in June, June, July, and that's the annual general meeting where we consider the annual report. So the next time we would consider the items on this agenda wouldn't be until late July, I suppose. I mean, we could try and squeeze in another meeting in the autumn as an alternative.
I think it would be infinitely preferable to try and get this done earlier in March, because these are timely discussions and considerations, aren't they?
Yeah. I mean, from what you're saying, there is a possibility that you will be free on the 23rd, it's that you have to hold the date, but it's a possibility it won't be needed.
And as Chair, so you're more likely to know than any of us, aren't you?
I don't know at the moment. I think if we could move to earlier in March, that would be easier. I can't say whether we're going to need that meeting, I can check, and if you want to do this by email, I can find out from.
I'm just mindful that at this time, yeah, it is always difficult to find meetings, because there are so many budgets and all the other things that are going on at this time.
It's difficult if it's a full council meeting, obviously, you're not able to send subs, so that, we need to avoid that, so.
Okay, so we'll, Paulina, we'll circulate some dates, and hopefully we can find one that everyone can do. I think that concludes the meeting. I do have a meeting with the Commissioner to discuss the next panel meeting. Are there any issues that you would like me to raise privately with him?
I just wondered where he'd got to with the CSP discussions and arrangements, and if we could have an update on that.
Okay. One that I was going to ask was, how is the deputy getting on?
Yes, please. What is the deputy, what is the deputy doing?
Okay, are there any other issues that?
Just a domestic housekeepingy one. I know this is a nuisance, but is there any possibility of making this row of chairs a curve? In other words, us move slightly out, because we're looking straight along a line at each other, and we often block each other's view. So if we could create a, you know, the classic boardroom table type curve, just so that these seats are a little bit further out, so that we can just see the people at the end, it would be much easier. I for one didn't even realise that Matthew was there until he spoke, because I couldn't see him.
Yes, sorry about that. Unfortunately, due to obviously Covid, you know, how we are at the moment, and because this is a corridor as well, unfortunately, this is the only seating arrangement that we can have at this moment.
Surely it's not a corridor while we have the meeting, is it?
It is, yes.
Oh, okay. We wouldn't be any closer together, we'd actually be, if anything, further apart. It's just, it literally, could literally be a matter of a foot or so, it's not going to make us any closer together.
I think let's close the meeting first before we continue discussion on this. Are there any other matters that anyone would like to raise before we close the meeting? Okay, then in which case, thank you very much for attending today, and look forward to seeing you hopefully in March. Thank you.